I would like to call the regular scheduled Fairfield County Council meeting to order Monday, August 26, 2024 at 6:00 PM, Winsborough, South Carolina. If everyone would please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Next, we are down to approval of the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to move item 12A until after item 16, executive session, and remove items 17A from the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and properly segmented to amend the agenda to move item 12A until after executive session and remove item 17A from the agenda. Is there any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero on that motion. Now, we are back to approving the agenda as amended. It's been moved and properly segmented to approve the agenda as amended. Is there any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero, approval of the agenda as amended. Next, we are down to invocation, Ms. Councilwoman Green.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to come together this evening. We ask your guidance as we make decisions to benefit the citizens of Fairfield County. We ask you to bless those who are in the audience, who have taken the time out to come tonight. We also ask you to bless those at home who are watching us and caring about the dealings that are happening with our county. And we certainly pray that you will allow more people to get involved as we make decisions to move this county forward. In your name I pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Green. Next, we are down to the approval of minutes for the regular meeting, 8/12/2024, Economic Development Meeting, 8/19/2024.
Second.
It's been moved and properly segmented. Is there any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. Item six, public presentations, there's none. Item seven, first public comment session, Dr. Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of council, Don Goldbach.
Good evening, Don Goldbach, Fairfield County, District Two. I'd like to speak to the agenda item about the animal control and animal shelter. First of all, I'd like to recognize Kathy Falk from Hoof and Paw and Director Joe Shaw for the great work they're doing looking at the proposed ordinance on the animal control. And it's going through its revisions right now, and I think they're doing a really good job with that, so I just wanted to acknowledge them. When it comes to finding an ordinance on the website, I do have a request. It's really difficult to find them. If you go to the department and then go to county council, down at the very bottom, it has a list of, well, it has a link to the ordinances, but they're listed in descending numerical order, and it's very tedious to go through that to try to find the particular ordinance. There's no way, when I search for a particular ordinance, it doesn't come up as a link. So, I know we have a really good IT department here. I would request that we have a better search engine for finding a particular ordinance. Regarding the animal control ordinance that's being developed, you know, when it is finalized, there's a matter of enforcement, and that is something that I know Director Shaw has months ago mentioned about getting animal control officers certified as Class III officers so they can enforce the ordinance. And I understand there's not been hardly any movement on that, so I'd like to understand why that is. I understand that surrounding counties, Chester, Kershaw, Lexington, have Class III animal control officers that help enforce their ordinances. Why can't we, or why don't we, and why haven't we moved in the five months since I had that conversation with Ms. Shaw? So, I would urge you, since the ordinance is being prepared, and when it comes out, it'd be nice to be able to enforce it, that we get that step taken care of. Thank you for your time.
Ann Correia.
Good evening, Ann Correia, District Two. Happy National Dog Day. One can only hope that a solution to the longstanding concern over our animal shelter and ordinance will become evident in council's discussions this evening and updates that, you know, you are discussing about what they need. If council can offer a reprieve from overwhelming concerns, they will truly become our county's heroes, and that's you guys. There are other pressing issues alongside this, and the undercurrent suggests you are making positive progress. As I continue to speak directly to Fairfield County residents and organizations who aid the animal shelter, we will be able to exhale a much-needed sigh of relief, so we thank you. It gives us a glimpse of your redirection and in-depth study of issues to build a relationship of positivity and sense of family within our community. It appears that you've sought out financial strategies to ensure it is not at the taxpayer's expense. Again, thank you from your constituents. The hope we feel is a result of your willingness to speak directly to the people if you are asked. This lends to the resolution of other concerning issues such as much-needed infrastructure, resident housing, current and future, everyday living concerns, and beneficial management of our finances through assessment and prioritization models. So, thank you to our administrator. We are heading in the direction of providing the people of our county a better, family-based community. One person alone cannot promise to provide you answers, especially if they are controversial. Handling loud, disrespectful, and distrusting voices is not easy, but the majority of common-sense people can build productive relationships and help everyone through healthy communication, and that seems to be your current vision going forward. I was asked by multiple constituents to voice a concern tonight, addressing inaccurate and misleading statements disseminated to the public. Upon my recommendation, they have started to question and are going to the sources such as yourself. They have found you to be extremely pleasant and offering straight facts which eases their minds. They have found that professional and courteous dialogue lends itself to accurate information. Most do not blindly trust secondary sources that do not have their best interest at heart. They realize there is an agenda. We, the people, need to do our own homework and start dialoguing more directly with those who make the hard choices. Their hope is that more people will wake up and really start questioning what they are actually reading or hearing to stir dissension. There are the doers, and then there are the talkers. Adversarial talk is interpreted as progress, but it is false progress. We all live here. We have the same needs. We want what's best for our families. So, on behalf of your constituents, thank you for listening to us. May God guide you and help you create a growing and family-oriented community. Keep striving, for alone, we can do so little; together, we can do so much. Thank you.
Randy Bright.
Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District One. I want to thank you for taking some giant steps towards where we need to go with the animal control issues. Certainly, the previous committee meeting is a big step in the right direction, and certainly what was on the agenda is, could even be a bigger step in the right direction. But I remind you, these are steps. There's a long way to go after this. We may win a couple of these battles with the legislation before you, but the war is still on for animal abuse. And let's remember that animal abuse is so costly to society in terms of not just the animals. There's a high correlation between animal abuse and human violence, versed both for domestic violence, for now and in the future. There's a high correlation between children who witnessed animal abuse and their abusive to both humans and animals in their future. So, there's a long way to go, especially in a state that ranks one of the worst in animal welfare legislation and execution. Now, on the other side of the coin, I think it's also time, now that we're finally making some movement forward with animal welfare in Fairfield County, it's time that we start recognizing those that have been the driving force behind this. And of course, Joanne Shaw, Bob Ennis, and the entire teams at Animal Control. They're, don't ask for recognition, they don't ask for thanks, they're just trying to do what's right. And I, wholeheartedly, we all owe them a deep debt of gratitude. And again, I would mention organizations like Hoof and Paw, Kathy Falk and her people, for years have put this animal issue in the forefront. They fought for education, for legislation, and certainly fundraising. Also, we remember all those adopters, all those foster parents for the dogs in the animal shelter, mighty contributions. Speakers before this podium, the Don Goldbachs, the Jeff Schafers, for years have championed compassionate animal care in Fairfield. And they should be proud today that we're finally moving forward. All those groups, and so many more, all the citizens out there, this is a community effort that we're moving forward, and it's good to see you're taking the right steps along a long road to getting animal welfare where it should be in Fairfield County. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak, Mr. Chair?
Thank you, Dr. Roberts. Now, we are down to item eight, public hearings, none. Number nine, ordinance resolutions and orders. 9A, second reading, ordinance 837, and ordinance to consider request to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance, number 599, and the related zoning map to provide for the zoning reclassification from I-1 to RD-1, tax map number 200-00-00-015-000, located on Certmule Road, Ridgeway, South Carolina, owned by J.B. Frazier IV and Philip A. Brown.
Most approved, Mr. Chair. Second.
It's been moved and properly segmented. Is there any discussion?
I'd just like to know what this property is going to be used for, just in one reading, no?
Mr. Chairman, the request from Mr. Frazier, he's like, he stated his purposes to make the property available for single-family residential use, and the planning commission and staff recommended that it changed because the surrounding properties are compatible with that.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we table this until we get a little bit more information on this. I understand what you're saying, but I'd like to have a little bit more information if I can get a second on that. Table this until the next meeting. Second.
It's been moved and properly segmented, that we table it to the next meeting. All in favor of tabling it? All opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. We will table 9A, second reading, ordinance 837, to the next meeting. Number 10, board and commission minutes for information only, there's none. 11, board and commission appointments, item A.
Mr. Chair, could I ask staff, Ms. Williams, if you could explain to us and the citizens how these appointments were made and the process that we're going through?
Yes, Councilman Ru. So, we put out a notice. If you remember, last year, we talked about the need to put together this committee in order to review any local and state hospitality tax funds as they go out. The advisory committee in state law does dictate who needs to be the representatives on the Hospitality and Accommodation Tax Committee when it comes to issuing out state hospitality tax funds, and most jurisdictions follow that same and use that same committee. So, the advisory committee consists of seven members, with a majority of members from the hospitality industry in the county. So, you have to have two members from the lodging industry in the county. One member shall represent a cultural organization in the county, and two members can be at-large members not from the hospitality industry. All of these applications were received, people submitted these applications themselves. There was no solicitation from staff, or as far as I'm aware, no solicitation from council members. You may have gotten some questions asked about how to apply, and everyone just submitted these applications. So, you do have eight members, eight potential members in front of you, and if you choose to go forward and elect someone, you would have to pick just seven. We can't have eight people on that committee.
And these were the only eight that applied, correct?
Correct. These are the only eight, unless something came in today, but yeah, these were the only eight that we had by the end of last week.
And so, basically, we're going to have to take seven out of the eight, and I would make a motion that we table this so that we can all examine this a little bit more to, you know, try to do the best we can on this.
Mr. Ru, let me ask, let me ask one question. Ms. Williams, according to what you read, so I'm assuming that the organization and in the hospitality, the lodging, those members would need to stay, so we would be picking from the at-large members, correct?
If you choose to, you can do it that way, because you do have representatives on this list from a cultural organization, two from the lodging, and someone from hospitality, and you know you need at least someone in those spots. If you want to take a little more time with the at-large members, you could do that if you'd like to, just go ahead and look at those.
Okay. It's been moved, it's been motioned by Mr. Ru to table this to have more discussion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly segmented. Is there any more discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. Table 12A, I'm sorry, 11A. To the next meeting. 12A, there was a motion made to move it after executive session, so we will come back to that one. 13 is new business. 14 is the county administrator's report. Mr. Keon.
Mr. Chairman, the first item is really a matter of information. We were going to announce the opening of the application process for the accommodations and hospitality tax funding request, but I think we probably need to hold off on that until the committee is appointed, so we will not open that process just yet. Then, 14B is an action item. Sheriff's Department applied for and did receive a school resource officer grant. It is a fully funded grant with no required match from the county. The Sheriff's Department has requested that the equipment portion of this grant be, they be allowed to order it immediately, because some of this equipment's got some delivery times on it and take a while to get. That's about $236,150 of the total grant, which is about $545,192. The recommendation is that we can probably front that money until we can get the reimbursement from the grant. You have to, it's a reimbursable grant anyway, so you go ahead and do the purchase, then we'll apply for the funding to come back, but we need approval from council to go ahead and allow the Sheriff's Department to order that, the hard equipment that comes under the grant.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and properly segmented. This is an action item for this grant. Is there any further discussion? See a nun, all those in favor? All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven zero. I did see Ms. Smith. Anything you want to add, since you did take the time to come here? All right. So, that SRO grant approved, seven to zero. Next, we are down to 15. Mr. Keon, I'm sorry, did you have anything else that you needed to add?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. I don't have this on the agenda, but as y'all know, this is Ms. Williams' last meeting with council, her last day with the county will be Wednesday. Still trying to twist her arm and change her mind, but I haven't had any luck yet. But I just wanted to thank her, because she's made my transition into this seat so much easier. She's got tons of knowledge of this organization, and just, all I can say is I couldn't have done it without her, and I don't know what I'm going to do without her, but we'll have to figure that one out, I guess, don't we? But I just want to say a thank you to her.
Thank you. Next, we are down to clerk the council's report, none. 16, county council time. Any council members? Mr. Gilbert.
Yeah, yes, Chair. I'd like to piggyback off of what Mr. Keon just said. Ms. Williams, it's been a pleasure and an honor to have worked with you the last two and a half years. Your knowledge, as Mr. Keon said, goes beyond what I would consider a lady, I mean, you just know it. Ask you a question, and you have the answer in the way your professionalism and the way you present yourself as knowing what's going on. I just want to say thank you for all that you've done. We're going to truly miss you, and I wish you the absolute best on your next venture in this life. Don't forget us.
I too would like to echo our thanks to you. I think you have certainly been a great addition to our staff, and that you've been so helpful to all of us. Your knowledge base is extensive, and you've shared your knowledge with really grace and charm, so we appreciate what you've done for us. Thank you.
Yes, I want to echo off of, I guess, the past three. Just congratulations on your, on your new job, and thank you for, for all you've done for the county. And you know, you always can come back. Yeah, yeah, you don't have to leave. All right.
I thought you weren't going to ever get to me. Anyway, no, that's what I was going to say. Thank you, Ms. Williams. You've helped me so much personally, you've helped this council, this, the county, you've just been a blessing, and you've got a wealth of knowledge, and we really are going to miss you. And you know, when I first heard it, I said, I'm absolutely not surprised, because when you've got a rock star, somebody's coming after you. So, you know, when you're good, people are coming for you, and so, we are going to miss you. Thank you very much.
I hate to be the dead horse, but I gotta say thank you as well. It was a pleasure working with you, and if I'm not mistaken, I think you are fifth-time published author, am I correct? Third? Thirty? Well, so, so we are truly going to miss a gem here, I'll say that, so, thank you, and appreciate you.
Ms. Williams, when, I think it's been said, but I'm going to say it again, when I received the notification that you had put your notice in, I was devastated. We've been through a lot together the last couple of years. I know we had ups and downs, but you have always been professional, hardworking, never a time that I think one of these council members asked for something, that we didn't get a very responsive, fast-responsive comment from you, or email, or a phone call. And just want to appreciate everything that you have done for Fairfield County. I know it feels great going to your new job, knowing that you don't have to attend council meetings, and hear us complain, or hear citizens get mad at you, but I know it'd be good to go home from work and enjoy yourself. And like everybody else said, you always got a place in Fairfield County. We had some trying times over the last couple of years, and you was always willing to step in to make sure we got where we needed to be. And I just want to say thank you. We will miss you. Come back, come back and see us, but I think we all can stand and give you a hand clap. Nazzy.
Mr. Chair, I think she should, we should allow her to flow to say something.
Well, I was going to say, is there anything that you would like to say?
First of all, don't make me cry. I'm not supposed to do that. I don't want to make up the run, but thank you all so much. I've said this several times, I am not leaving angry, and I wish Fairfield so much in the future, and if there's anything I can do in my new position, you have an ally across the border. I will continue to be assistance in any way that I can, and I'll be watching. I've already told several department heads, keep me up to speed on these projects, let me know how it turns out, so it is bittersweet, and I am going to miss working in Fairfield County, but thank you all.
Next, we are down to executive session. 17A has been removed from executive session. In executive session, item B, receipt of legal advice and discussion of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services. of matters relating to the proposed location, expansion, or the provision of services encouraging expansion of industries in the area served by Fairfield County Council pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty-four dash seventy-eight-five. C, receipt of legal advice and discussion of employment of county administrator pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty-four dash seventy-eight-one. Item D, receipt of legal advice and discussion of matters relating to the provision of services encouraging expansion of an industry known as capital concrete, which is in, which is in the area served by Fairfield County Council pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty-four dash seventy-eight-five.
So moved?
It's been moved and properly segated to go in executive session. Is there any discussion? See a nun, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Let the record reflect seven oh, we are now in executive session.
I'm glad.
I will entertain a motion to come out of executive session.